With us this evening, we have Reverend Eric Horns from First Baptist Church of Meyer to do our invocation, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. If everyone would like to stand, I mean, then just bow to the word prayer.
Father God, we just come before you in this time, and I personally, Lord, thank you for these community leaders. I pray your blessing and your presence over them tonight. We know it's not easy, Lord, to make decisions that affect the whole, and so we just pray that you would guide them with your wisdom here, and especially in this time where still there's so much of a need to understand the COVID and how help, how we can help everybody in this process. So I just pray your blessing over them. I pray that you would be with them tonight. I pray that all that they do would give you honor and glory, but also that it would help each and every individual here in this community. It's in your name, Lord, that we come before you. It's in Jesus' name that we ask you to bless them in this way. Amen.
Amen. Thank you Reverend Horns.
Aye.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Larry.
Here.
Harvey.
Here.
Amy.
Here.
Fox.
Here.
Juan.
Here.
Peters.
Here.
Next in our meeting agenda packets is the approval of minutes for the regular council meeting of July 22nd, 2021, the planning commission meeting of July 29th, 2021, finance committee meeting of July 29th, 2021, and the special council meeting of July 29th, 2021. Any errors, omissions, additions to those minutes are to have one. And the regular council meeting minutes of July 22nd, anywhere R cap is mentioned, there's no A in front of R cap, just R C A B. I don't want someone looking for that acronym and not finding it. Others, hearing none, those will stand approved. Next is audience participation. We have an invited guest, Kevin Wood from IBI. If you would like to make your way to the podium, because now you have to get to the happy village of Covert's Council meetings as well.
Yes, thank you for putting me on early, and it's nice to actually see people in person. Some of you, for the first time, I've seen your faces. So I handed out, or you handed out earlier, a kind of a brief agenda. A while back, Councilmember Klein had asked that I come periodically, quarterly-ish, and just kind of run through a quick update on all the projects that we're working on here in the city. So I will just run through this list. First on the list is the sewer study, and this is in relation to the consent decree on the sewer project. And that is ongoing with a due date of September 30th before a final draft of that report. So we've been working on that for several months now, as you know. There have been flow meters installed eighteen different locations. We are on the, going on the third month of those. We've had some good rain events during that time, so we've been able to collect some good data. So that's going well. And the report will look at the treatment plant, the wastewater treatment plant, both what it would cost to replace it with a new plant, as well as going in and checking every aspect of that existing plant and looking at what it would take to make improvements and upgrades to that plant. We're also looking at the Batham Lane area and the Phase Four and Phase Five Sewer Collection, Combined Sewer, Sanitary Sewer Collection System areas, and then lastly, the storm sewer pump stations and the stormwater drainage from the US-52 area. So that is ongoing. The Fifth Street Bridge Replacement Project is also ongoing. There is a draft proposal for the next stage of plan development that Mark Dick has, and possibly by the next council meeting, that may be before council. The Third Street Waterline and Street Reconstruction Project, the city received a grant of around six hundred and, or multiple grants totaling about $644,000 on that street reconstruction project where there have been so many waterline breaks. A stipulation of that grant is that it, the project be completed by the end of next year, calendar 2022. So I've been work, we've been working with the mayor and the city and Ralph Klein on trying to obtain additional grants to leverage the grant that you have that would help offset the cost of replacing that waterline, which obviously you want to replace that line before you rebuild the street above it. And so we're looking at how far north we could extend the project beyond just stopping at Lorraine and taking that further north with an EDA, Economic Development Administration grant, as well as possibly some of the House Bill 168 money that Ohio has included in the budget for water and sewer projects. So we're, had a call with EDA, and Ralph was on that this last week, I guess it was. So we're continuing to work on those, and I have a draft that the mayor had requested a proposal to complete plans and specifications from the south end of the project at the bridge up to Lorraine. That may well, may as well be on the count, in front of council at your next meeting. The State Route 93 Roundabout Project, that is ongoing as well. Plans are well underway, and that is still slated on ODOT's calendar to go out for construction bids in 2022. We are working with Ralph Klein in looking at a potential third roundabout over on Lawrence Street in order to eliminate some of those, a couple of those upgrade intersections on 52, looking at what that might cost, scoping that out and putting a cost with that so that we could pursue some potential funding for that project as well. The fifth item on here is First and Pine Street. One of the first things that we worked with the city on last year, excuse me, was applying for an ARC grant to improve First Street from, or I'm sorry, Pine Street from Third toward the river and then First Street South in that industrial commercial area. And the city was successful, and I list the amounts there, but receiving a little over $200,000 in a grant, and there will be a local requirement of $87,000 in local funds on that project. The mayor has also asked, that grant has, agreement is in place with the city. So the mayor has asked for a proposal to get plans put together on that. So that as well is in the works, and you may see that here in the near future. We are preparing technical specs and plans, working with Ryan Watts at the water plant and the mayor on replacing filter media at the water plant, which is really past due of being replaced. And I know that the city has bond funds set aside in the water department that would cover those costs. So we hope in the next couple of weeks to have that package prepared, including the bid documents, to present to the city for review so that we can put that out for bid and get that project completed. The seventh item on here is income surveys, and you may have, I'm sure you're aware of this. I just wanted to give you an update, and briefly, we're looking at everything from Center Street South in the city. Through working with Ralph Klein and Cindy Anderson and the mayor's office and others, we've determined that we, that that would potentially be an area that we could get income qualified for federal grants. And there are multiple CDBG and other federal grants that require, that can only be awarded to communities who are income eligible. A couple of years ago, we income surveyed the entire village of Coal Grove, and now they're eligible for these grants. We've income surveyed a large section of South Point, and now they're eligible. So we've been in the process of sometime doing this, and we're working with the state. It's a very methodical process. Terry from the mayor's office has mailed out, I think, the third mailing of randomized addresses that we have to mail these to, and we have to make three attempts at each household to collect a survey. We need 400. We have about 208. The state only gives you a six-month window in which to complete those. And so that window will close on September 15th, which is not very far away. So another mailing will go out the end of tomorrow, I believe, or Monday. And so we are in kind of the final stretch, and I've, I developed a press release that I gave to Ralph and to the mayor's office and into the Tribune, where hopefully they can help publicize this to make people aware of it, that if they receive this, please fill it out. It's completely confidential. The survey comes, is mailed in its enclosed addressed envelope, stamped envelope. It comes to our office. It, so this isn't going to the mayor or to council to review the address and incomes. It's all confidential. So we hope to get the, up to the 400 surveys that we need, and then that the result we need, which is that at least 51% are low to moderate income. That will open the door for a lot of various types of grants in that area. Susan Dooley had asked me to help her update their zoning maps, so we've developed a CAD drawing with those and provided a draft of that to her last week. So that hopefully will be wrapped up here. I know there are some discussions going on, according to her, updating, making some updates to the zoning maps. So this will allow you to easily change those and have hard copies and electronic copies going forward. And then the last three items on here are funding related. We spend a lot of time tracking all the state and federal funding, as you know, that is out there. So we're pretty busy right now in that regard. I'm sure you've all heard of the Ohio House Bill 168 funds that I referenced earlier. Those are due to Pat Leidy's office by the 23rd. And we are looking at submitting two projects to him for the city of Ironton. One is packaging some of the CSO projects related to this consent decree. The second is the waterline replacement project on South Third. And as you're probably aware, the city of Ironton and the village of Coal Grove have been in discussions about Coal Grove potentially decommissioning their water treatment plant and buying bulk water full-time from the city of Ironton. Those discussions are ongoing, but obviously it would require that Ironton replace that waterline. And Coal Grove, who we're working with to replace most all the waterlines in town with some grants they received, the one line they did not replace with that project is from the plant up to the interconnect with Ironton. Pat Leidy suggested that the two communities submit a joint application to him for that waterline replacement, which I think is a great idea. So we're working with both communities to get that done, and I'll be presenting that at Coal Grove's council tonight as well. The 10th item on here is EPA Sewer Funds. EPA, Ohio EPA, the funding arm of EPA, is a huge source of financing water and sewer projects in Ohio. Loans to every community from Columbus to Coal Grove every year. And in the spring, they accept nominations on water projects, and in the fall, which is this month, on sewer projects. So it's really critical to get projects submitted on that list, especially now with a potential federal infrastructure package. Back in '09 and '10, when that happened, every, all of the water and sewer, hundreds of millions of dollars that came to Ohio were funneled through EPA in this program. So we are planning to renominate the four projects to the EPA this month that we nominated last year, a new water treatment plant, the Phase Four and Five Sewer Line Projects, and Batham Lane. And we may add a couple other things into that this year that we've developed during this study. And the last item is just the federal infrastructure funds, which we and everyone are tracking closely to be able to be prepared and take advantage of those if and when that does come about. And then lastly, in your packet, I believe, John had provided this list of all of the in-contract tasks that we're currently working on and kind of your budgeted, I'm not going to state this correctly, John, but to just kind of show you what has been budgeted in each of these projects and where you are to date with those. And I'll just close by saying I've really enjoyed this past year working with the city, and everyone here has been great, and it's, I'm looking forward to helping the city make some of the improvements that you'd like to make on your infrastructure. Questions?
Chris.
First of all, appreciate you, all the work you do. I know you're a busy man. Second thing is, I know the time sensitive, the sensitivity of the time with turning these in. Do you need any legislation from council for, to get those submitted on time?
Yes, good question. Many times we will, but the WPCLF, which is this EPA nomination forms that are due this week, do not need a resolution, nor does the House Bill 168 need a resolution. One thing that I did not have on this list, and I failed to put on here, is the Ohio Public Works Commission. Those are due in this district this year on October 1st. So we definitely, we've talked about a couple potential projects to submit on behalf of Ironton for that program. That will require a resolution here in the next couple of months, but we'll be sure to get that over to the city in time for you to act on it. And depending on what happens at the federal level, you know, who knows what may be required, but we'll be on top of that, so.
Thank you. Nate.
Again, thank you, Kevin. I appreciate you coming in. The communication is just very important. So I know, yes, I was willing to ask you to come in, but I think it's a good thing just to keep us, keep us honest here. Do you see us falling in budget with all these items that we have lying through the year?
Yes, so all of the, like, tasks, one through six, are actually part of our, we have a general services contract with the city. So those are all just on an hourly, as requested basis. So those are all things that if I get a call from Ryan and he says, hey, can you look at this or do this at the water plant? And, you know, I'll check with the mayor, make sure that's okay, and that's what those are. The bridge project, obviously, that was the initial phase of design. That's a set fee. The next pending proposal that will be coming is within the original ODOT budget amount, and then the study is within budget as well. So I guess that's a long-winded answer to say yes, as of today, everything.
And the only, I wanted to, I sent an email, it's been a little while ago, but the funding opportunity for FEMA, the brick, building resilient infrastructure, I know we talked about that last fall.
Yes.
I don't know if we could kind of circle back around and maybe use some of that flow data that you're using for the feasibility study, an application for something that for the flood pumps.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yep. Thank you very much. Appreciate you getting me on.
All right.
For sure.
Thank you. Others who would like to address the Ironton City Council this evening? Only one client can speak at one.
Okay. Well, Ralph Klein, CAO. I just want to give you a little heads up. There's a resolution on the thing. I didn't send a letter. I probably should have, or memo. Basically, it's a resolution also relating to mayor to send a request to the state to use program income monies for some pieces of the splash park improvements that we're doing. And there's like three different handicap items. One's a handicap water feature, one's a handicap opener, and then another one is a handicap accessible shelter with a handicap table, roll-up table to it. And those are eligible activities with CBG. So basically, we have to just get approval from the state, and then the monies are collected here locally from previous projects, and things are on hand. So we're looking between 30 and 40,000 probably what we'll be looking at on that. So I just want to let you know.
That's Resolution 2147, Brian Graff.
Yeah.
Nate.
Just want to clarify, no city dollars expensed.
No, no, this is all CBG program income.
All right, thank you.
And, sorry, the majority of the work is to make it more handicap accessible, right?
Yeah, all, everything on this, these funds would have to go towards handicap accessibility. Now, we've gotten contributions from different organizations and that kind of thing that are going for other improvements in that area, like the arch and things like that, so.
Thank you. Okay. Ralph?
Thanks.
John Elam, Finance Director. This is a busy time of year for the finance department. We're going to have a mayor's budget that will have to be done by next month, an alternative tax budget, five-year plan, then followed by a temporary budget and a permanent budget. To that end, based on seven and a half months' data, I would like to have a finance committee meeting, if at all possible, next week to adopt the budget amendment that I worked on this week, or at least have discussion on it that I've worked on this week. That will give me the starting point in the preparation of all of the additional budgets. So it's kind of, I know where I think the numbers are going to end up, but I think that I would prefer you all to look at it and give input and possible recommendation on it.
So does it need to be a findings committee, or could it be a budget workshop?
Whichever way you would prefer to have it.
Because you don't need a favorable recommendation out of it, right?
Well.
There's no actual amendment.
I have it prepared in amendment format.
Okay. My next committee meeting it is.
And probably 15 to 30 minutes. It will be to everyone prior to the meeting, so you'll have an opportunity to review it and ask questions if that does anything to affect your time allocation.
Next Thursday, work for you? Nate, next Thursday, work for you for finance?
Well, I was talking to Jacob about how the strategic plan on Tuesday for a door and food truck. Then I haven't talked to Chris about this yet, but I was going to ask him about a rep, and he also, on that same day, I didn't know, Tuesday might be something.
I'm not available Tuesday.
Yeah, one second, please. Yeah, I can be Thursday.
Okay. I'll have Miss Williams.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
Moving on to communications. Glaring absence from our council meeting this evening is our mayor. He sent a communication, just as an update for council meeting on the 12th. One, item one, our second city cleanup event is set to take place Tuesday, August 31st through Saturday, September 3rd. Tuesday, August 31st through Saturday, September 3rd. We've partnered with Ironton Municipal Court and the Upper Township Trustees to provide more to our residents during our end of summer cleanup. Special thanks to Kevin Waldo, JT Holwood, the Ironton Municipal Court, and Randy Wise, Upper Township Trustee, for participating in this to make it happen. Simulations, one truckload per resident. Resident must present their current city utility bill to dump, scheduled drop-off at Storms Creek Marina location, which is where the other cleanups have been held. And those hours are Tuesday through Friday, 8:00 AM to 3:00 PM. Saturday, 8:00 AM to 1:00 PM.
Tuesday through Friday, what time?
8:00 AM to 3:00 PM. Saturday, 8:00 AM to 1:00 PM. 8:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m., Saturday, 8:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. Item two, we've now launched our SmartGov software to streamline and enhance our code enforcement efforts in the city. Residents can submit a request to track the status of their request by signing up on the city website or on the website that I'm about to read really long H T T P here below. Residents may remain anonymous when providing a request, but it is recommended that you leave some form of contact, email, telephone number, et cetera, in case we need more information about the request. Types of requests are limited to, since it's related to code enforcement efforts, blighted properties, height, grass and weeds, environmental concerns, and building zoning violations. Link can be found on the homepage of the city's website, or residents can access it directly, in case that are watching, H T T P S colon backslash backslash C I dash the minus sign dash. So now we got front slash backslash minus sign dash, ironton dash O H dot smart gov community dot com backslash code enforcement backslash code enforcement home.
Probably best way to go is just get on the city's website.
Probably better off. If you're, if you're watching the feed of our recorded council meetings that are live-streamed and you have a chance to rewind and write that down, H T T P S colon backslash backslash C I dash ironton dash O H dot smart gov community dot com backslash code enforcement backslash code enforcement home. Number three, notice of condemnation has been sent out to eight properties in the city. Thanks to Susan Dooley for the hard work on this, and thanks to council for appropriating the means to fund this project. Number four, the bidding for our cell tower lease has ended, and we have received bids, and the mayor will give updates at the next council meeting regarding bids. Communication from the mayor. That will be attached to our meeting minutes. I'll just give it to the clerk. Next reports, there are none. Ordinances, if the clerk could please give ordinance 2145, second reading by title only.
Amending the permanent budget for the city of Ironton Stable Ohio for the fiscal year ending December 31, 2021, and declaring an emergency agreement.
Bob.
Make a motion that we suspend the rules. Give ordinance 2145, third reading by title only, impossible adoption.
Second.
Mike, thank you. And also to mention, in our special meeting of July 29th, that we had a preceding finance committee meeting that was favorably recommended. Roll call, please.
Larry.
Aye.
Harvey.
Aye.
Amy.
Aye.
Pop.
Aye.
Klein.
Aye.
Chris.
Aye.
Chris.
Aye.
If the clerk could please give ordinance 2145, third reading by title only.
Amending the permanent budget for the city of Ironton Stable Ohio for the fiscal year ending December 31, 2021, and declaring an emergency agreement.
Bob.
Move to adopt ordinance 2145.
Beth.
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Larry.
Aye.
Harvey.
Aye.
Amy.
Aye.
Pop.
Aye.
Klein.
Aye.
Chris.
Aye.
Chris.
Aye.
Ordinance 2145 is adopted. Next, we'll move on to resolutions. However, Nate?
Make a motion to get executive session to discuss litigation with action to follow with solicitor and finance director.
Bob.
Second motion.
Roll call.
Larry.
Aye.
Harvey.
Aye.
Amy.
Aye.
Pop.
Aye.
Klein.
Aye.
Chris.
Aye.
Chris.
Aye.
Chris, you may-